Good evening and welcome to the September fifteenth, 2025 Board of Alderman Meeting. We have an echo, but could everyone who is able, please rise and join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Oh.
Have a little bit of feedback, I'm sorry. Alderman Plufka?
Here.
Alderwoman Gold?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman Harder?
Here.
Alderwoman Parker Tyce?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims? Alderman Gould?
Here.
Alderman Erger?
Here.
And Mayor Dimmitt is also absent.
We're going to pause a minute and see if we can figure out this echoing. Ah, it's finished. You will notice that I am not Mayor Dimmitt. As many of you know, he represents the city well as the president of the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis, and it's the Missouri Municipal League meetings this weekend, so he is there representing us. So, next up is agenda approval. Does anyone have any changes or amendments to the agenda? Any opposition to having it approved by acclamation? Saying none, it will be so approved. Moving on to announcements, appointments, proclamations, and recognitions, we have one from the Fire Department, Chief Cottrell.
You're going to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Daniel Brewer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Missouri.
And the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Brentwood.
Of the City of Brentwood.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And diligently.
And diligently.
Demean myself.
Demean myself.
At all times.
At all times.
While serving.
While serving.
As firefighter, paramedic.
As firefighter, paramedic.
For the City of Brentwood.
For the City of Brentwood.
For which I was officially.
For which I was officially.
Appointed on the fifteenth day of September, 2025.
Officially appointed on the fifteenth of September, 2025.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to Daniel, and welcome. Item five on the agenda is a public hearing. I will gavel open, a public hearing on revising Brentwood city ordinances regarding certain 2024 ICC codes. Wendy, could you introduce this for us?
Every two years, new ICC codes are. They're on every other cycle, so it's now, we are currently on the 2018 code, so it's time for us to update to the 2024 codes. This was initially discussed at the Public Works Committee in June. We've had a number of open meetings, workshops with contractors in the HBA in July, and in August, we met with the multifamily developments in the city, just about their concerns. John is here, he can walk you through those items that we are looking to modify as part of adopting the 2024 code.
And, we could do that during the regular, we can do that during the regular part of the meeting.
Okay. At the later date.
Okay.
It is a requirement of building codes that they remain open for. So, we will close it and then have a second reading at the December.
Okay, great. Any questions by Steve?
Mine is just a comment that Whitney kind of touched on it, but they did a lot of work in looking at these as far back as June, when they brought it to the committee. As Whitney mentioned, they had an open house where they invited, what, four hundred contractors, home builders, trades group, even the HBA Home Builders Association, and your slideshow is, that they presented, is in your information there. They also had, met with different condo associations in our area, different building associations, different apartment buildings, sat down and met with them and went over things, and then, once again, different trade groups, and there's even a letter from one of the trades mentioned in the information we got here. So, I, we can talk about this again later, but I'd just like to thank the work that you two have done on presenting this, and once again, this is open for ninety days, so if anybody wants to make any amendments along the way, we can do so. Thank you.
Any other comments from other alderpeople? Any comments from the public on this item? Anyone online, Octavia?
I'm not showing any raised hands.
Okay, well, with that, I will gavel close the public hearing, and that takes us to citizen comments. So, are there any citizens here who would like to address the board? You have up to three minutes, just state your name and address. Anyone online for this that's raising their hands?
No, I'm not showing any raised hands.
Okay, moving on to mayor and alderpeople report. On behalf of the mayor, he asked me to report two things. First, it's the best weekend in Brentwood. It's Brentwood Days coming up this weekend. The carnival part starts four o'clock on Friday till ten PM, and then the parade is at noon on Saturday, and then the rides will start immediately thereafter. There's music both nights. Saturday, the rides end at eight PM, and there are, it's a drone show afterwards, so it should be a great, great weekend. Look forward to seeing lots of people there. And second, he asked me to bring up the police, excuse me, the Fire Department Open House, which is on Saturday, October the fourth, from eleven to one, so we hope to see lots of people there as well. And then, from me, Ways and Means is meeting on October the second, and we are beginning the budget process. We will have our budget books by then, so if you are not on the Ways and Means Committee and would like to come, please, please do, and there'll be lots of, I'm sure there'll be lots of questions. Moving on to Alderman Plufka.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee will meet on the twenty-fourth of September in these chambers at five thirty.
Alderwoman Gould?
Thank you. The goats for sustainability committee brought over are a huge hit. Everyone on the trails can't stop talking about the goats. Have you seen the goats? Go over to the goats. So, huge hit on the goats. Also, want to thank the police, particularly Officer Dominguez, for helping with a senior citizen who was getting scammed. Please remind your neighbors or keep an ear out if they're trying to pay their bills with Amazon gift cards or the bills of a loved one. You can't pay them with Amazon gift cards, so just, please look out for your neighbors.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes, our Ward Three meeting that was originally scheduled for Tuesday, the thirtieth, has been moved to the following week, which will be October seventh at six thirty in the Rec Center. Thank you.
Alderman Gould?
Yes, and our Communications Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at six o'clock, so if anybody's interested in what's going on with that as it relates to the city's communication efforts, please join us.
Alderwoman Harder?
No report.
Alderman Erger?
No report.
That takes us to the City Administrator's report, and I don't see anything there. Now, we're moving on to the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda. Is there, does anyone have any questions, or would anyone like to remove anything that's on the consent agenda? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone, second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. And Alderman Erger?
Yes.
Great. Moving on to old business, we have a second read of Bill Number six five seven one. Madam City Attorney, could you read that for us, please?
Bill Number six five seven one, an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of a five-foot-wide strip of land known as two eight three one Hilldale Avenue as excess property.
Is there a motion to perfect Bill Number six five seven two into ordinance form?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Passes, thank you.
By a vote?
Thank you. Moving on to the second item of old business, Bill Number six five seven two. Madam City Attorney, could you have, could we have a second read of that, please?
Bill Number six five seven two, establish the property tax rates for 2025, ordinance establishing the rate of property tax to be levied for the year 2025 for general municipal purposes and police and fire retirement fund.
Is there a motion to perfect Bill Number sixty-five seventy-two into ordinance form?
I move to perfect sixty-five seventy-two into ordinance form.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
There have been no comments from the public on this?
Michelle?
There has been none.
Okay, great. If there are any changes, we'll bring this back to the board. Thank you.
Here.
There's been a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Great, thank you. Moving on to new business. First item is Bill, Resolution Number fifteen sixty-three, which is a resolution approving a development agreement between the city and Quattro Brentwood LLC. So, this is the first piece of property in the Manchester Road Corridor that we are looking at, at doing some work on, so I'd like to bring up Joel Oliver to just give us a little overview of this and what Kinder Care looks to do.
Good evening, everybody. We could not be more excited to finally be here with the years and years we've been working on this project, with a lot of externalities out of everybody's control. This is a wonderful use that is a real asset to the community. What is in front of you tonight is for a new Kinder Care facility, which is childcare, for those that don't know what that is. It is on the north side of Manchester, which is fitting with the redevelopment plan that we all agreed to, which feels like an eternity ago, which just showed various commercial uses that could serve the community. So, we're thrilled to be here tonight to present that and continue the road ahead of us all, so available if there's any questions. Thanks.
Bola, can you explain what is before us tonight in this resolution?
Thank you, Alderwoman Tyce. What is before the Board of Aldermen this evening is an approximately twelve thousand square foot building, associated parking and playground, and related improvements for future use as a Kinder Care Learning Center on the land that is Zoned MC Manchester Corridor Commercial District. They are asking for sales tax exemption on construction materials used in the construction of this facility. I want to point out that the sales tax exemption that is being considered by the Board of Aldermen, according to the developer, would save them approximately one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The incentive will have minimal financial impact on the city and will have no impact whatsoever on the school district. We expect that upon approval of the request this evening, a formal application will be submitted to the city, and within diligent agenda management system, the timeline for going forward is provided for your review. They intend to submit an application to the Planning and Development Department this month, and then it will be scheduled for the Planning and Zoning Commission Agenda in the month of October, and will come back to the Board of Aldermen for consideration and approval in December, and apply for permit in the month of January, February, 2026. Then, construction will commence in February through the end of October, 2026, and they hope to open the facility in October of 2026.
Great, thank you. And, oh, Steve, go ahead. Okay, well, I was, let me, I'll pull Whitney up real quick, and Whitney, can you talk about whether this is an appropriate use for the zoning in that corridor?
Yes. The proposed property that they are looking at is Zoned MC Manchester Corridor Commercial District, where daycare centers are listed as a conditional use for properties over an acre, therefore requiring review at the Planning and Zoning Commission of the site development plan, and then ultimate approval of that site development plan and conditional use permit by the Board of Aldermen.
Okay, great. Okay, so now, Alderman Lockmiller?
I don't know if this is for Whitney. It's a question within the development agreement, a particular section in there. I don't know if Mark is the one that speak to this.
Yeah, so, Mark, can you, Mark's from Gilmore and Bell, but.
Thank you. My name is Mark Spikerman. I'm with Gilmore and Bell, representing the city.
Mark, in the Article Two, the Section two point one, can you kind of go through what the mechanics are of the issuing of that bond?
Sure. These are what we call in shorthand, Chapter One Hundred Bonds. It's a reference to a section in the Missouri statutes. As part of this Chapter One Hundred Bond transaction, the city will acquire a leasehold interest in the property during the construction period, will lease it back to the company. There will be bonds issued, but they're not the same type of bonds that finance a school district building or a city hall. These bonds are, on paper, sold to the developer, and they're payable only from lease payments made by the developer during the period that that leasehold interest is in place. They're not payable from any city taxes or other public funds. Once the project is complete, the leases get terminated, the bonds get canceled.
And that, that bond, there's no, we're not obligating the city to any debt?
No, these are, what we refer to as special limited obligations payable only from those leasehold revenues paid by the developer during the construction period, and not from any city taxes or other public funds.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Gould?
Is this a location, a relocation of an existing facility or an expansion, and, you know, can you speak to the, the, kind of, purpose for?
It is not. This is a brand-new facility. To my understanding, it has no impact on the other ones. They just realized that there was a need in the community that wasn't currently being met. So, and that's, it's generally a use, obviously, that is, is close. You have, I mean, Wildwood isn't bringing their child to this facility, and they work in Chesterfield, so.
Yep, understood. All right, thank you.
Other questions for? The chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution fifteen sixty-three.
I make a motion, second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Gould?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman Gould?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harder?
Yes.
Alderman Erger?
Yes.
And Alderwoman Tyce?
Yes.
Motion carries by a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you. So, our second item of new business is Bill Number sixty-five seventy-four, which is the 2024 ICC code. So, John and Whitney? Oh, I should start with, this is a first reading, so could we have a first reading of Bill Number sixty-five seventy-four?
Bill Number sixty-five seventy-four, an ordinance amending provisions in Title Five of the municipal code, all relating to the adoption of technical codes and miscellaneous provisions pertaining to buildings and construction.
Okay, now Whitney and John, thank you.
So, the draft ordinance before you is still in working format. We have to keep the comment period open for ninety days. There are a number of changes that we are also proposing that we could walk you through. We did also include that for the month of April, high grass and weeds would not, we would not be enforce that section, so that is in there. Do you want to walk through the other?
We, we can, but, excuse me. I mean, you guys were all giving a copy of the PowerPoint that I put together. It's like fifty slides long, so I don't think you want to sit here and go through that tonight. But as you look at it, you can come back to us and, you know, ask questions, or I can come back to another meeting, we can ask questions, and I'd be able to answer those for you. You know, why we're doing stuff, or why we recommend, or recommend something to stay in a code, or recommend something to be taken out of the code. We've done a lot of discussion on this, as Congressman stated, we've had some, you know, meetings with contractors and HBA, and we're hoping to have more with them over the next ninety days, but this is a work in progress. So, by the time we get this ninety days done, we'll have a final bill that will be, that you'll be able to read and see what all the changes are, see what the amendments are to the, to what we're suggesting to be in the code.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Your Honor, Whitney, could you explain why we even have to do this?
The, the codes are adopted, are issued every couple of years, and if the city is more than two years off the last cycle of when it was issued, it affects the city's insurance rating, and therefore, the residents would see an increase in fees. It also addresses life safety matters that have come up since previous codes have written, and about the building safety and those life safety matters within, for new development. It also, and addresses new technologies such as EV, charging of vehicles, and electrical codes required for that.
Are there other, Alderman Gould?
From a procedural standpoint, can you, can you speak to how and why we go about selecting only some of the code and not just adopting the full code? Some of it, you're saying, we're not going to use.
So, we are adopting the full code, but we are saying there are some specific items that are not necessary for our community.
Okay.
Such as the requirement for lining of a chimney, we've, that could be a big expense for a residence, where we're suggesting if they have a level-two inspection from a chimney sweep company that says that the chimney's fine within two years, then a liner would not be necessary. Those kind of things. We took some of the concerns of added cost, and that's why some of those things are taken out of the code. Do you want?
There were also things that were, were put in there, excuse me, all the lights in the house would have to be motion censored or on timers, things like that in your garage. You know, I can see maybe in your garage, your basement, but not through the rest of the house. And there's other items like that. It just, you know, those are things that are going to add a lot of cost to a new construction home, so that's why we, we decided, you know, we want to move those off of there.
Okay, thank you.
It was, it was only those items we didn't fill were life safety.
That's, that's what I was kind of getting at, is that they're, the items that we're talking about not adopting or not being part of our code is, are the ones that don't seem to be focused on life safety and actually public safety of, of purpose of the code.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and, I know this from being on Public Works, but I know the Fire Department weighed in and really looked through this, especially on the life safety issues. Other questions? Alderman Lockmiller?
And then, as we approach, which would, I guess, would be the adoption in December, any amendments that have come up, or any changes to that code would be presented at that time?
Correct. Correct.
Right, thank you.
Alderwoman Gould?
Gould, Gould, sorry.
Two questions. When do we have to approve by to make sure our residents' insurance rates aren't impacted?
We would, we're hoping for adoption at December, at the December fifteenth Board of Aldermen meeting, with implementation starting January one, 2026.
I believe they're ISO, Rodney, correct me if I'm wrong, is it twenty, twenty point six, I think we're due again?
Yeah.
For an ISO evaluation?
And then, second question, I believe the Building Trades Association or the Home Builders Association was looking to get us some feedback. Do we have an approximate date on when we should expect their feedback on the codes?
I have heard nothing from them. I've asked for what they've got right now, so we could start reviewing it, and there was no response.
Questions? Okay, well, we have quite a few months to continue working on this, so this, you all have put a lot of work into this. This is only my second go-around with redoing codes, but you seem really thorough and thoughtful in how you're approaching this, so thank you. Okay. That takes us to item twelve on the agenda. Sit us and comment, our second opportunity for that. I don't see anyone in the room. Is there anyone online?
I don't have anyone online.
Okay, great. Then, with no further business. Then, with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.